Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Microphone. This work session of the Board of Education of the Cleveland Municipal School District will come to order. Mr. Stockdale, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bingham.
Here.
Mr. Hurd.
Here.
Ms. Dempsey. Ms. Ellicott.
Here.
Mrs. Hudnall.
Here.
Mrs. Link.
Here.
Dr. Sridhar. Dr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Valdez.
Yes.
There are seven members present.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. I would ask everyone who's able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board Business Meeting of February 28th, 2023.
Second.
Second. Thank you, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. It is great to be here at Oliver Hazard Perry School. We can't remember the last time we had a board meeting here. I would now like to introduce the Principal, Ms. Brittany Irvin, to tell us about her school and her amazing students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our community continued to be dedicated lifelines for students and families. The National Center of Education Statistics states about seventy-six percent of public school teachers are female. What a great reflection of what women do to support our children. Tonight, I lift one female voice that transformed the pedagogy for many educators, myself included. From teaching to transgress, education as the practice of freedom, Bell Hooks as a classroom community, our capacity to generate excitement is deeply affected by our interest in one another, in hearing one another's voices and recognizing one another's presence. A beloved, path-breaking Black feminist and educator, Bell Hooks, died in December 2021. Clay Risen stated in a New York Times article, "Ms. Hooks began her climb at Stanford University from which she graduated in 1974 with a degree in English literature." While still an undergraduate, she began writing Ain't I a Woman?, its title borrowed from a speech by the Black abolitionist Sojourner Truth. She received a master's degree in English from the University of Wisconsin in 1976 and a doctorate in literature from the University of California, Santa Cruz, in 1983 with a dissertation on Toni Morrison. The quote shared reflects the classroom community our team aims to cultivate at O-H-Perry. We will now transition to a video showcase to lift the voices of O-H-Perry students and educators. In this video, you will see the creative expression during our Black Culture Celebration. The artifacts in this video include third-grade students singing, a skip performed by sixth graders, a second-grade wax museum of Black leaders, and the soul food research results from fifth grade. In addition, the student work in math-making and photography from a partnership with Art House's Urban Bright Arts and Education Program, and artist Guy Vincent, and Center for Arts Inspired Learning and artist Asia Graham. Our restorative practices and inquiry-based teaching and learning values captured in this video reflect an introduction to our vision, our school-wide expectations, and a snapshot of math instruction. Enjoy.
Hey, did my sister hope you gave me a basketball picture?
What? I had no idea.
I don't think I learned about something.
Three hundred and fifty-five in the NBA.
John Maron.
Michael Jordan.
The Bird.
No, try Aaron Lloyd.
Aaron Lloyd.
There was a man.
Oh, you guys, you guys look up a recipe. You guys tell where the asterisk is, the type of food.
The menu highlights.
Hmm.
So you did Kim's Wings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What were the menu highlights for that one?
I'm sorry.
Ooh, loaded fries. What are those like? Different toppings?
Exhibits self-managing skills that model for other how to make their choices. If someone needs encouragement, help with an assignment, or our school environment is in need of attention. A caring student is there to assist without improvising.
Carter, what does a caring citizen mean to you?
If somebody is hurt, I always help. I always help them. And that always means to you.
Yeah. What does a caring citizen mean to you?
It means it sounds like a caring friend.
You have to look at it closely and it's more than that.
Well, I don't think it's shrinking, but I guess let's keep an eye on it and see if they get smaller. What's one way we can check to see? Hold on, Lee. What's one way we can check to see if they were getting smaller? How would we know? What would we need to do?
A telescope.
A measuring.
We need to measure them, right? So watch out.
Thank you very much. Thanks for hosting us this evening, and thanks for that as well. That was great. I have a couple of things to mention before we get started with the CEO's presentation this evening. First, I want to remind the community and Board members that the applications for the CMSD Board of Education are now available. As many people know, under our structure, the Board of Education members are appointed to four-year terms by the Mayor of Cleveland from a slate of nominees nominated by the community-based nominating panel. Mr. Bibb's office has posted online the application for anyone interested in being appointed or reappointed to the five expiring terms on the Board of Education. The application can be accessed at the City of Cleveland's website, clevelandohio.gov/cmsdapplicationform, or the CMSD website at clevelandmetroschools.org. The application deadline is April 14th for any mailed applications and April 16th for online applications. Next, I would like to provide an update to the community about where we are in the search for a new CEO, and we are pleased to be able to provide that update and announce tonight the next opportunities for members of the community to participate in the selection of our next CEO. The Board of Education will begin interviewing CEO candidates within the next few weeks. These interviews will take place via Zoom, and we expect to interview twelve to fifteen probably candidates. Following these initial interviews, it is likely that we will conduct an additional round of interviews with a smaller group of candidates before deciding on our finalists, which will likely be two or three candidates. At that time, we will again call on the community to interview finalists. The Board has established a number of community panels, including a student panel, teacher panel, parent and caregiver panel, and a principal's panel. Panelists will be selected via lottery from those who volunteer to participate. We expect the interviews with the finalists to occur in mid to late April. To nominate yourself or someone else for one of these community panels, please visit the CEO search website, clevelandmetroschools.org/ceosearch to complete a nomination form. The nomination form will be available in multiple languages. The window to submit a nomination form will open tomorrow, March 15th, and will remain open until April 5th. Again, panelists will be selected via lottery and will be notified in early April if they have been selected. In addition to these panels, the Board will have a union leadership panel and a community partner panel. Leaders from the various unions represented at CMSD received invitations from the Board this afternoon to participate in a panel. Participants in the community partner panel will be receiving invitations shortly. There are additional ways for community members to participate in the finalist stage of the search. If you are interested in suggesting interview questions that the Board may want to ask finalists, again, visit the website, clevelandmetroschools.org/ceosearch to submit those questions. And then the community should be aware that major portions of the finalist interviews will be livestreamed so that the entire community can view and learn more about each finalist. The Board is grateful to the community for your active interest and participation in this process. And with that, CEO Gordon, I turn it over to you for your Chief Executive Officer report.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Board members, members of the community. I want to start actually just building on what Principal Irvin showed you today of the showcase of her school here at Oliver Hazard Perry and the inquiry model. In your materials package on the right-hand side, you'll see that this year we are sponsoring our first set of pre-K8 school fairs so that Ms. Irvin and her colleagues can show off the great things happening in their schools. There are four of those across the community, starting tomorrow, Wednesday, March 15th, two on the west side, two on the east side, and all of our schools will have the opportunity to showcase, very much like our high schools have, and just wanted to take the opportunity to leverage Ms. Irvin and your great work to recognize this broader work. I also want to take an opportunity today. We are celebrating Women's History Month, and two of our principals from the schools that this board renamed recently, Mary Church Terrell and Stephanie Tubbs Jones, actually presented their young ladies presenting a contest called Who's That Girl? And we all got to sign in, and there were ten questions about either Mary Church Terrell or Stephanie Tubbs Jones, and we had to compete to see if we knew who that girl was. So I got nine out of ten. I'm very proud of myself. I was upset at the one I missed. I should have known better. But it was a great, warm welcome to just continue to think about bringing all of our identity to this important work. And so to see this work here also, Ms. Irvin, thank you for lifting up the importance of that in Women's History Month. There is a lot going on. It is hard to believe this is the last week of the third quarter already. I don't know where this year is going. But just a few things that have happened since we last met that I think are worth naming. Last week, or now two weeks ago, we had the Cleveland Rotary's Annual Thesmacher Who's Who of Cleveland School Students. This is the top five high school seniors from each of our high schools who come together and do a day-long New Generations Conference and then have a luncheon together, and then the Rotary presents a report of their findings back to the Rotarians themselves and to the district, and it was just an exceptional, exceptional event, as it always is. We also have had a large number. It is winter sports tournament time, so we had the indoor track for our Senate League, and John Hay brought home the girls' trophy. I know. I'm not sure the men's trophy because I ended up not being able to go, but that has happened. We had boys wrestling over in Perrysburg for the district tournament. Glenville not only won their district championship game for the second year in a row, but competed in the regional semifinals in boys' basketball. We had four girls wrestling from John Adams and John Marshall at the District Girls Wrestling Tournament in Benter. And our cheerleading teams from John Hay and Glenville competed in the state cheerleading championship, with John Hay taking the runner-up of their division and Glenville taking the championship of their division. So CMSD schools taking number one and number two, and they were really remarkable. Last week also, we sponsored a middle school and high school SCL Anti-Bullying Summit, and I want to pass out to you an original student publication that was released at that event. These are middle school writings called COVID Kids: Tired of Hiding My Smile, and these are all pieces that young people from various grades across the district wrote, reflecting on what they experienced during COVID and how they want to change the narrative, which was the theme for the summit. So I wanted to make sure you got this publication. We had about 200 students on Thursday in middle school and then another few hundred students on Friday for our high schools. On Saturday last week, we had our new teacher learning series, again, investing in our new educators, and this is part of our Teaching Cleveland Grant that is sponsored by the MAT Conference, the College Championship Playoffs, the Cleveland Foundation, and the Gunn Foundation, where our Excellence in Teaching Award-winning teachers and other educators invest in our new educators to make sure that they're getting the supports that they need to start their career successfully. It is also Disney musicals time, and so those are happening. I do have the schedule to share out with Board members in my board note this week. William Rainey Harper, where we were before, their musical was this weekend. Yesterday, there were two schools that actually played their musical at Playhouse Square, and they will continue into the month of April, so exciting stuff going on there as well. Today was the Y-O-U Youth Career Olympics, and these are students from East Tech, Garrett Morgan, Glenville, John Marshall, Lincoln West, and Max Hayes, along with students from Maple Heights and Warrensville Heights who are competing in various job readiness-related activities. And I will just say, we took home a lot of the awards. So really an exciting event to watch our students competing on their knowledge of job skills and their knowledge of financial literacy and things of that nature. Also today, I had the really incredible advantage or opportunity for Technical Sergeant of our Air Force Junior ROTC, John Marshall Student 10th Grader, his name is Nick Sherwood. Nick shadowed me today as the CEO for the day, and that came out of actually the advertisement for the next CEO. He sent a note to me through email saying, "Mr. Gordon, I heard that they're looking for a new CEO, and I know who would be good at it, me, because who would know what students need more than students?" So I took him up on it, and today he spent the day with me and got to go to all of the things that I did, fully participate, and had, I hope, had a really good time. I know I did. I got to spend the day with just an incredible young man from John Marshall High School. As we look into the rest of this week before we get to spring break, on this Thursday, one of our PACE events is our NASA Career Exploration Day. This is a new event with NASA out at NASA Glen, where over 200 of our juniors will go to NASA Glen and get a full experience right there on the NASA campus. And then there will be 25 students who are offered paid summer internships at NASA as part of their PACE experience.
CMSD.
Very excited about that. And teeing up right now, also on Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Capitol Theater, we will be debuting or premiering a pandemic documentary written by our own communications team and led by Communications Television Station Manager Ben Dreher. And so I'm going to pause a second so that you can actually see the trailer, get a little teaser, so that we can get you out to the Capitol Theater on Thursday evening. CMSD is a vastly different place than we were in 2011. Together, the momentum we are seeing from kindergarten to third-grade literacy improvements, the momentum we are seeing on test scores from third grade through high school, and the momentum we are seeing on continuously increasing graduation rates earned us an overall grade of D on this year's report card, up from the F we earned last year. I started the speech today by talking about Newton's Laws, but up to now, I haven't mentioned Newton's Third Law. For every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. That law implies that our momentum can be stopped if an equal and opposite reaction is applied.
Health experts believed it was just a matter of time, and now the coronavirus is in Ohio. Three cases in Cuyahoga County.
So we are announcing today that children in the state will have an extended spring break.
One week turned into two, two turned into three, and then next thing you know, we're supposed to be having summer break.
I teach math. Math is an exact science. It's very hard to teach mathematics online or through a computer to a kid who doesn't know what one-to-one correspondence is, doesn't know what a number is.
We learned that when it was required of us, we could innovate very, very quickly. I hope that we don't lose that as the world seeks a sense of balance and normalcy again. So you have the flyer for our free premiere this Thursday, March 16th at 6:00 p.m. at the Capitol Theater. Tickets are not required, but they are suggested, and we have already had over 200 people request the ticket. CMSD is a vastly different place. And there is a QR code in the corner that you can scan if you would like to request the ticket, but either way, hope to see you there. I have not seen the film yet. I am going to get to see it premiered just like everybody else. And then we will have two panels moderated right after the film responding to the film, including Chair Bingham on a panel looking at those of us who were responsible for administrating this. So that includes principals, Sherry Oberinsky from the Teachers Union and others, and then a second panel of students and parents and others who were experiencing what we were going through. And so really looking forward to seeing momentum on this Thursday. Spring break starts on Saturday, March 19th, and runs through Sunday, March 26th, and then we are back for fourth quarter on Monday, March 27th. So we're quickly getting into the final part of the year. Also wanted to point out in your package, the second annual spring bake sale from the all-new Executive Grill, so make sure you get your orders in there. And then also some athletic events coming up, our basketball combine in April and our baseball softball combine in June, and these are new opportunities for our students to show college recruiters their talents and get noticed for college scholarships. Also in your packet, on May 11th and 12th, we'll be holding our annual social-emotional learning conference at Tri-C Metro Campus. So we will be having Dr. Stephen Stroka right here from Case Western Reserve University as our keynote speaker and a wide range of workshops for educators who provide social-emotional learning services for kids and adults. Separately, also want to just lift up that we've had now two very thoughtful meetings with Mayor Bibb and members of his administration, along with Cleveland Police Department, RTA, with Council President Griffin, with Violence Prevention and Intervention Partners and many other partners, to really start working on a much more collaborative and coordinated effort to be preventive and responsive for the kinds of community issues that we've been facing around our schools. And so we have a number of short-term things that we're already implementing, as well as some long-term planning for next school year that is already underway. And Mayor Bibb also co-authored with me a letter to our school community, just updating on the efforts of our collaborative work together. And so I'm very pleased that we've had now two of those meetings, and fully expect we'll continue to meet through the balance of the school year to make sure that we're doing everything we can to have a really safe spring as we finish out this week and then head into the fourth quarter at the end of the year. And with that, I'll conclude my report and turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. We will move right into... I'm sorry. Oh, Mrs. Link?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for setting up the K8 school fairs for families, and my question is, how are the, like, how is the community made aware of those?
Thank you. So there's several ways that the community is being made aware of them. We have mailed a postcard and mailing, which is actually in your package, to all of the homes that are demographically coded as having pre-K8 children in them. We're also using our IVR, social media. Our schools are actually advertising themselves. So there's a kind of a whole array of efforts to try to get our school community aware that these are happening.
Thank you. I think that's really good.
Okay. Could I have a little tech support here before we get started? This evening, we do have a number, 27 resolutions in the areas of Board of Education, Finance, Operations, Academics, and Talent that will be presented to the Board for discussion only. The Board will be asked to consider the adoption of these resolutions at our March 28th Board Business Meeting. And with that, Mr. Gordon, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll begin with Resolutions 6.01 through 6.012, which I'll explain altogether because they are all the same content of resolution, but each for a different particular parcel. In April of 2022, the Ohio Legislature passed and Governor Dewine signed amended Substitute House Bill 126, which now requires Boards of Education before filing a complaint with respect to the valuation of real property parcels in their school district to adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of those complaints at a public meeting of the Board. In the past, we would just do this as an administrative procedure. Now it is a Board-required policy adoption. The new law also requires that the Board provide written notice to the real property owner of the Board's intent to file the complaint at least seven calendar days before the adoption of the resolutions. The new law also requires Boards of Education to adopt a separate resolution for each property, and that's why you have 12 separate resolutions, except that a single resolution may identify more than one property parcel if it's all the same owner. So you have to have different properties, but if there's multiple parcels by one owner, that can be in the same resolution. When you do adopt them, you can adopt them by consent agenda. You don't have to adopt every one of them individually, but they do need to be listed individually. With this resolution and these 12 resolutions, we will be submitting evaluation requests for the properties listed here. Just to give you some sense of this, as I understand it, the Columbus City Schools submitted 200 complaints, and so while we are often seen as a very aggressive Board of Education, we really do try to be reasonable on the properties that we think are truly undervalued and should be contributing more to the property base and not try to be just always pushing out every single property. But so I'm happy to go into any one of the 12, if you'd like, in more specifics, but the general notion of these is that in order for us to request a review of the property's estimated value, we now are required to bring them to the Board for public adoption before actually going to the county to have the appraisal considered.
So, Mr. Gordon, thanks for the explanation. Who's watching this for us?
So, Mr. Gordon, thanks for the explanation. Who's watching this for us?
We use David Seed as our tax attorney. He's been our tax attorney for properties for many, many years.
Yeah, right. Okay. So in the... I don't see any valuation, any dollars listed in the resolution. So I'm not sure how it works. So the county says it's valued at $10,000, but we think the real valuation is 25, so that's why we're going to challenge it?
That's right. And so the resolution doesn't require us to say what we believe the property's value is. It requires us to say we believe it is undervalued and should be reestimated essentially by the county. And so it's typically properties where a... and it's typically commercial properties where a office building, for example, may be sold for $1 amount, but then when it shows up on the duplicate, it comes up, it is a much lower amount. And so we believe that if it was worth the sale value, that it should be estimated at a higher rate. And so these resolutions simply list the property, the reason for the complaint, which is typically a recent sale, and then the parcel and property address. Behind this, the filing will then have all of the kind of detailed tax documents that Mr. Seed handles on our behalf.
So by virtue of this resolution, the county must hold a hearing?
By virtue of this resolution, we are able to request a, essentially, a challenge of the assessed value, request a hearing. Whether that happens or not, and whether it falls in our way or not, is still up to the same process we had before. But it essentially begins either an assessment hearing or a negotiation with the property owner to find, you know, closure, one way or the other, for the issues.
And will we ever know what the outcome is?
I can make sure that the Board gets a report as these cases are completed, yes.
Thank you.
And let me make a note of that. So I add it into my follow-up file.
And I'm sorry that I missed the legislative brunch that you held. Do our legislators know the gray red tape that they're putting us through?
Our legislators do know that. This, as I understand it, actually was led in part by some members of the Downtown Cleveland Alliance who felt that we were aggressive with our tax complaints. I would argue that we try only to bring legitimate ones, but of course, depends on what side of the position you sit on. But it is part of a larger change in state government right now around taxation, including right now, House Bill 1, which is actually also considering restructuring Ohio taxes at the state level completely with flat taxes and other things that would have pretty significant impact on all local governments, including the school districts. So this has been just kind of a pathway we've seen happening lately at the state legislative level.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gordon, is it possible that we could get maybe just a summary line item, like on one page, that has each address that we're going to be... like, I mean, I can certainly go in and look at each one, but, you know, I'd like to sort of see it all at once to see, like, east side, west side, what, you know, and if I'm doing Google searches myself, I could just do it faster, and just like I'm doing right now. And then my second question, and maybe I... so I heard, I don't know, maybe six months or a year ago, you say that they were going to change this whole... like, I understand this process, but the bigger process of, let's say, a building downtown is worth, like, they say $20 million, we think $40 million. Are we still no longer allowed to question that? I mean, I see we can question it maybe this way, but say, say this thing is 20 million, they do it again, they still say 20 million. Is that it?
So this bill, what we're doing right now is the window of time that we are still legally permitted to file complaints if we believe properties are undervalued. That same bill, though, does put a prohibition on it moving into next tax year. So starting next tax year, a owner can request that their taxes be lowered because they believe it is overvalued, but a public entity, including us as a school district, cannot request that it be considered for increase in the coming tax year. So this is kind of the final year we're able to do this.
Okay. So I think I understand. So next... so, and these are all sales? Like, this, what you've just listed, it's not... is that correct?
Largely, they are sales. There are some other reasons. I believe these are all sales.
Okay. So let's pretend next year, someone sells a building, the same example. We, you know, they sell it for 20 million, we think it's worth 40 million. Even though it's a sale, we still have no recourse anymore next year?
That is my understanding of the law, but let me verify that with David Seed.
Okay. Thank you. Because that... I mean, I'm happy about this, but not happy, of course, about the other. And the other... another comment is, Mr. Seed's probably doing this for us, but we should probably also be keeping records of what we're saying, and then if we get it or don't get it, so that, like, at the end of each year, quarter, or whatever it is, we can say, we think we've lost $500,000, $5 million, whatever it is, so we can keep track and keep pushing on it, because it's not good.
Let me add that note, too. That's a great, great idea for us to keep track of going forward, what we would have likely contested.
Yeah. I mean, just whatever. Just records of what we do.
We do have, just for your information, Ms. Link, we do have historical records that we actually put together when we were arguing against the passage of this bill. But what we can add to it is keeping track of what we believe we would have contested, had the law allowed us, so that we can see not only what we would have lost in the past had we not been able, but what we believe we're losing in the future as well. So...
And that might be a good thing, just to distribute to the Board when it's convenient, that what you gave to the legislature, because then we would at least be armed with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Resolution 6.13 is a resolution amending the Board policy on student harassment, intimidation, and bullying. You will recall that Mr. Bertzloff and Dr. Fox were going through all of our policies, and we had a couple that we held back because we knew that we would amend them when we updated the Student Code of Conduct. We are now to the point where we're preparing next year's Student Code of Conduct. And so with this resolution, the Board would be amending policy JFCF, Student Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying. As I mentioned, this was not addressed when we did the recent policy reviews. Because of the Code of Conduct changes, we contemplated through our Student Behavioral Supports Committee, which is a joint committee between the District Administration and the Cleveland Teachers Union. That committee has now reviewed those documents, and later you'll see the Student Code of Conduct itself. And so we are recommending an update of both the Board policy and the Student Code of Conduct. We also took the feedback from the Board from the last year's Code of Conduct and have addressed the readability to improve ease of understanding of both the policy and the Code of Conduct. And Exhibit A shows the changes to the policy in its entirety. And I'll pause for any questions the Board may have.
Does that committee have any input from any students or caregivers in this process?
Let me check for you. I don't know the answer to that, so let me get you an answer.
It strikes me because, as I was mentioning earlier, I was walking through the hallways of Garrett Morgan, and one of the things that I noticed on their hallways was that they had what student posters for what teenage violence could look like or harassment. And they seemed to be very receptive of this type of incidents. And so, you know, we're writing policies that directly affects, you know, our students. To be the most up-to-date on what is affecting them would be, I guess, smart of us to engage with them in that aspect.
Thank you. I'll get you an answer. I don't know the answer, but I will ask the committee. Okay. All right. Resolution 7.1 is a resolution approving the General Fund five-year financial forecast. In a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Stockdale to do a brief presentation on this. This is kind of atypical for this time of year. Typically, we do the five-year forecast in April or May, and then in October or November. But you will recall that when we adopted the forecast back in October, November timeframe, we were starting to show a deficit in the out-years, and Ohio law requires us to put a corrective action plan in place. So Mr. Stockdale and my team and I have been working on that, and actually have seen some improvements in revenue and some expense reductions that allow us to update the five-year forecasts so that we meet the requirements for the Department of Education, which Mr. Stockdale will show you here momentarily. So we're going to ask that the Board adopt this at your Board Business Meeting in March. Then we will be back in April or May, probably May, so that we have a little bit more window with the actual spring five-year forecast that we're required to bring you every year. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Stockdale to give you an update on the forecast.
Good evening.
I'm going to skip ahead to slide number three. And I'm going to try to focus on the high points of why we did the five-year forecast, and then why we're talking about this right now. And Mr. Gordon talked a little bit about why we're doing this right now. As he said, November 22nd of last year, we submitted our initial five-year forecast to the Ohio Department of Education as required by law. We would have another one due by May 31st of this year. Because we had a deficit in year three of the forecast, we were required to revise it, and that's under the Ohio Administrative Code section that's referenced. There are two sections to the forecast, the historical and projected financial data, and then notes and assumptions. The historical and projected financial data are the basis for the five-year forecast directly, and that is what you will be approving. The notes and assumptions are just that, how we build the forecast itself. So we turn to four. To put this in context, we have the Fair School Funding Plan, which is going through the phases of implementation. It was the first funding year was fiscal year '22, so we're still seeing the impact of that. And then House Bill 126, as you just heard, with Item 6.01 through 6.12, reduces our ability to challenge property tax valuations. So we have one side of the equation that's not moving in a favorable direction for us. On the fifth slide, I'd also like to point out that we will have much more refined information available in May. And our timing to submit this is to meet the Ohio Department of Education's requirements, but February is a large revenue month for us, and having February actuals, especially for revenue, which will form the basis of the May projection, will be much more valuable, especially as we look moving forward into out-years. We also did not include any assumptions about the impact of legislation pending before the General Assembly, different bills that would help and hurt us. We did not include anything for those. On the next slide, this shows our fund structure. And really, I only put this up here to point out that we are talking about the General Fund only. It's the bottom box on the bottom left. The General Fund is our most broadly applicable fund. It's least restrictive, and it also pays for most of our services. So that is the one that we're required to I'm now on the slide with the November forecast, and I'd like to point out a few things. First, annual shortages, which is the line net revenues excess shortfall, do occur, and those do not cause us to have to revise the forecast. It's more so when our cash overall goes into a negative position. So on this slide, I highlighted in fiscal year '24, '25, the $16.9 million end-of-fiscal-year cash deficit. So that's a June 30th deficit. On the next slide is our March update, and it shows a $1.7 million surplus fiscal year '24, '25, which is highlighted as well. This is largely due to a few factors. One is the positive revenue information that we've received since the November forecast. So revenue are about 4 tenths of a percent higher than what we had projected at that time. It includes state revenue as well as property taxes. Like I said, I'll know more after February, where we can put it in better context. We also assume a... that we reduce our subsidy to our school lunch and breakfast program, which right now is running at about $5 million a year. Next slide really touches on notes and assumptions as they regard to our stimulus dollars that were for coronavirus relief. And as you can see, three of the first tranches of funding that we've received have been fully committed or spent. And the last and largest ARP is 52% spent or uncovered, or was as of January 31st. And we have until September of next year to spend those funds. So one of the things in the forecast is those funds coming off and us making a plan for how we're going to modify our spending and look at revenue. And that is not in this forecast, but it will be in upcoming forecasts. You can read the note that, you know, we're focused on providing the CMSD experience as we know it and continuing that as it regards to academic, social, emotional attendance, enrollment, facilities, technology, and other needs. Specific assumptions that support that in salaries and benefits, the first one, and this is a major one, is that as the federal funds are no longer available, those expenses return to the General Fund. We also assume the bargaining unit wage increases that have been negotiated, and we project forward healthcare costs using a 6.5% assumption, which is fairly in line with what other school districts are seeing. We also assume that a portion of purchased services, supplies, and capital outlay that are provided for with federal stimulus dollars transition over to the General Fund. As I mentioned, the property tax information is based on the information that we've received from the county, and we will have better information with our February collections. You have previously asked about the collection rate, and that is unchanged from our November forecast. The State Foundation Formula, our assumption is that we continue with where we are with the State Foundation Formula. That is under consideration right now with the General Assembly as to whether or not they accelerate the phase-in or modify it. We assume no additional funds as a result of that, no changes other than what's already been enacted. And then Mr. Gordon spoke to House Bill 1, which would have a substantial financial impact, depending on how it's implemented potentially, and then the operating budget as well. And this last bullet is the one that, really, this is kind of a... we will have more information in May, and that is because we are currently going through the district internal budgeting process for schools and departments. And so we're talking to those people about what our financial picture looks like, and asking what they would need to sustain and support our mission. And we're looking at potential for savings through that process. So that's everything I have.
Dr. Thomas, just before questions, I do want to go back to slide nine, slide nine for just a moment, and just want to point out for the Board and the community that school districts are under a very different timeline than other governmental agencies for their ARPA dollars. So school districts must spend our funds by September 30th of 2024, while most other governmental entities have through March 30th, 2026. So you'll often likely hear, you know, why have we spent so quickly compared to other agencies? Well, because we have, it's essentially, a little over a year remaining before those dollars have to be expended or returned to the federal government, unlike what we see at city, county, and state governments. So I just wanted to point out that difference. I do not know the thinking at the federal level of why that was. I anticipate kind of the assumption of the need of young people in a much more acute and short-term way, but it is an important differentiator to be aware of.
Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, you might not be able to answer this question, but was the Fair School Funding Program meant to help offset what HB 126 did about property tax valuation challenges?
I do not believe so. I know so. It was not.
It was not. Okay. So, all right. So we are again...
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. Two questions, hopefully pretty simple. You mentioned reducing the breakfast and lunch subsidy. That's federally, right? That's not our decision.
The, so the school breakfast and lunch program is funded from multiple sources, one of which is federal funds, and then we have been supplementing it with general funds, and that practice began only during the pandemic. And so as we return to a more normal operation, the assumption would be that we can return back to subsidy reduction.
Okay. And then on slide 10, just the purchase services, supplies, and capital outlay. You say we're spending pandemic relief funds. What kind of services and supplies does that generally entail?
So it's everything from supplemental programming to technology. Obviously, earlier in the pandemic, things like, you know, cleaning supplies, supplemental, anything that was pandemic response-related. We are more so now on the assisting students side of things. I could certainly get more information about what that is if you'd like.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. This is a more general question, so I understand that this is about the general fund, which is roughly $650 million. Can you just talk briefly about the other, I don't know if it's called Title I or whatever, the other, like, is that still about 400 million? Or, just so people understand, that the whole numbers that we deal with is really more like a billion, but most of that other money just goes in and out, I think, if I'm paraphrasing it correctly?
So Ms. Link, you do recall that there used to be a million-dollar budget with money going in and out. In 2022, with the implementation of the Fair School Funding, that stopped, and we saw about a $300,000 decrease in revenue and in expenditures because the flow-through stopped happening.
You mean 300 million?
300 million.
Okay.
Yes. So we do still get Title I, we still do get IDEA. Those are smaller federal block grants, but the money that significantly went down was the aid that was going into our budget to flow out to community or charter schools. That is no longer in this budget. And so if you look historically, you can see in 2021, we looked way more wealthy in the expense column than we did in 2022.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes. So I'm going to bring up the L word, levy. Based on what we see here today, when are we going to really have to start talking about that?
So on the current forecast, and before we do any budget control elements coming out of the pandemic, you would be looking at the '25, '26 school year, which is where we have always been forecasting about halfway through the 10-year period of the last levy. Remember also that you recently restructured your debt to be able to do a no new millage issue for either maintenance or bond or other things. So you have a couple of structures in place that are going to allow you to consider when and how you would ask for the levy. But what we will need to be doing as a team is really targeting that '25, '26 school year to make sure we can get, the board can get all the way to that year. The numbers look big. We've done it before. We will do it again and do it in a way that makes sure that we are keeping it as far away from classrooms as possible. A lot of what we have not yet got to do, now that Mr. Stockdale is here and he mentioned it, that we'll be doing between now and May, is looking at what are those things that we intentionally invested one-time costs in that won't flow into this next budget? So for example, in that 29 million, the things that Mr. Stockdale mentioned also include the HVAC work that you've already approved that is one-time work. We purchased new musical instruments and art supplies that should have a sustaining life, and so we need time to now back out some of those costs that are still being carried through and get a true picture of what is the gap we want to close for that '25, '26 school year.
Thank you.
I just also want to thank and compliment Mr. Stockdale for so quickly coming up to speed on the K-12 five-year financial forecast, which is a new world for him. Really very quickly became knowledgeable about this and worked with ODE to get us to this solution, so thank you. Moving ahead, Resolution 7.02 authorizes the acceptance of grants from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, and authorizes the CEO to spend the funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grants. With this resolution, we'll be accepting a grant in the amount of $211,725 to support the education of refugee students. And from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, a grant in the amount of $3,226,191 to enhance safety and security in CMSD schools. And these are the dollars that we've been talking about that we're using for camera upgrades and new doors and locks and those sorts of things that Chief Dotson has been working on. We've been gathering these in different phases, so we have, I think we're in the third phase of granting now from the state for these dollars.
I just have a question. When you mentioned cameras, how many cameras does the district operate?
I can tell you very quickly because it's in my dashboard. I know it's almost a little over 6,000, but I can get you the actual number.
Okay. Because I remember reading something like 5,400 sometime recently, and I noticed...
Yes, it is 5,400. 5,406, of which 166 are not currently operational. We're at 96.9% operational.
Because I think I read someplace recently that the city operates something like 2,300 cameras, and that difference struck me as interesting, that we have so many more operating, so many more cameras in place.
Yeah, I would guess the difference is that we have a lot of interior cameras, and I'm guessing city properties may not have as many and may have many more exterior. I don't know that, but that would be my assumption.
I thought that just the difference in numbers was somewhat striking.
There are four in this room alone.
We're watching you.
Yeah. Taking pictures of you.
Resolution 7.03 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of gifts and grants from the Cleveland Clinic Foundation, Daniel Lee Morgan Memorial Fund, the Ireland Foundation Fund, the Molly Agnes Voinovich Memorial Fund, Friends of Cleveland School of the Arts, the Cleveland Browns Foundation, the Cleveland Foundation, Project Lead the Way, and the George Gunn Foundation, and authorizing the CEO to spend the funds in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grants. This is a fairly lengthy list of grants. From the Cleveland Clinic Foundation, a gift in the amount of $40,000 to support revamping the computer lab at Bolton Elementary School. From the Daniel Lee Morgan Memorial Fund, a gift in the amount of $614 for book awards for students at Daniel Lee Morgan. From the Ireland Foundation Fund, a gift in the amount of $1,635 for general support of Ginn Academy. From Molly Agnes Voinovich Memorial Fund, a grant in the amount of $5,001 to support gifted and talented education here at OH Perry. Another grant of $5,001 to support the general gifted and talented program of the district. Just for context, the Voinovich Memorial Fund always gives a grant to this school and to one other gifted program at the discretion of the district. From Friends of Cleveland School of the Arts, a gift in the amount of $23,867 to support travel and expenses for students at Cleveland School of the Arts to attend a workshop at Howard University. From the Cleveland Browns Foundation, a grant in the amount of $10,000 to support the creation of the Stay in the Game Room at Franklin D. Roosevelt. Stay in the Game is the attendance campaign work of the Cleveland Browns Foundation. From the Cleveland Foundation, a grant in the amount of $100,000 to support CMSD's Teaching Cleveland New Teacher Retention Program. That's the program I mentioned we had the Saturday program for earlier. From Project Lead the Way, a grant in the amount of $7,500 to support the implementation of Project Lead the Way's Gateway Program at Douglas MacArthur Girls Leadership Academy. The Gateway Program is a science exploration kind of program, a kind of a general exploration program. And from the George Gunn Foundation, a grant in the amount of $370,000 to support the Cleveland Metropolitan School District's Public Service Fellowship. This is for us to hire and provide professional development for a number of one-year fellows who work in various departments across the district. And I'll pause for any questions here. All right, Resolution 8.01. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just thought of it. The George Gunn Foundation of $370,000. How many years will that support? Do you know?
That is a fellowship for one year, and I'm going to look at Dr. Shankman's seven fellows? Six fellows. Six fellows plus professional development for one year.
Oh, that's right. They get paid a full salary.
Yes.
Yes, they do. Okay. Thank you.
And we have really enjoyed the fellows that we've had, and I think that they would say they've had a really great experience with us as well. So we're looking forward to the renewal of that.
Anybody stay?
Yeah, and I would also echo, I have a friend at the foundation, and she very much compliments Marcy for all her work, and it's different from the other public entities. They don't all have someone as gifted as you.
To the question of do they stay, we are actually running a mini job fair for them before they go to encourage them to look at jobs inside the district that they might be interested in. I would say of this year's fellows, there's probably one that has decided other work is what that person's passion is, but hopefully we'll keep some of the talented people we're helping to groom right here in the district. Resolution 8.01 is a resolution authorizing the CEO to offer real property that has not been used for school purposes over the last 12 months to community schools pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. So as you'll recall, recall, the district is required, all school districts in Ohio are required to offer properties to charter schools at fair market value if they have not been used within 12 months before we can dispose of them in any other way. And so this process of offering the charters began with appraisals performed in December of 2022 for the Jane Adams property, which is approximately four-acre site with a 139,000 square foot building, as is of a value of $700,000. And also the former union site, which is, the facility is torn down, but is still a property that we have to offer. And full appraisals are both included in the board's notes. So we will now send written notice to each charter school operating within the district. They will have 60 days to accept offers at the appraised values. We will also make available the opportunity to visit the Jane Adams building should they want to go inside and see the building as well. And then if there is an offer that we're required to take at fair market value, we'll obviously bargain that. If not, then we'll be able to take the next step, which is to either auction or to work with the city in property disposal. So this is part of our continuing efforts, Dr. Thomas, to move the properties that are no longer being used by the district into other useful purposes.
Great. Okay. Sorry. So that's fine. So, Mr. Gordon, quick question. I saw something, I think it was maybe on Signal, I don't know which news outlet, but it was a building that we had already sold, so there's a new buyer, and I'm sure we vet the, you know, like, in the process of selling the building. I realize it becomes that person's, you know, responsibility, but it does still look like a school. It still looks like we're not being good stewards. So I guess, you know, what do we do? And I don't remember what school. It could have been Central. It was some school that I didn't even remember.
Yeah.
Did you see it?
Yeah, there was a news article in the last few days about it, and it's, I think it's off Kinsman. It's been vacant a long time. We sold it several years ago to a developer, and it's been sitting there collecting graffiti and that sort of thing.
Let me find out more about it. I don't know, without knowing what property and when it was sold, I don't know the answer. But what I do know is our current process is a collaborative process with the City of Cleveland. We accept requests for proposals that both the city and the district evaluate collaboratively to determine which projects we believe have the funding stack and the potential to stand up, and those are the properties we've recently brought to the board. But I will investigate this news story property. I haven't seen it yet, but I'll look into it.
Okay. I was trying to find it again.
Okay.
Is there another question, Mr.?
Yes, because someone asked me this, and I didn't know the answer. What's the status of the old JFK Building?
The old JFK Building will be part of the demolition package of Segment 8 when it's approved by the Ohio Facility Construction Commission. I can get you an update from operations on that one, but it's part of the demolition package that we have to have approved by the state.
Okay. Then we'll do the same thing, sell that real estate?
Yeah, once it's demolished, we will work with the city before going through, again, an RFP process to transfer the property into its next life, whatever that might be, selling the real estate, having a developer develop it, doing a land swap. There's a variety of things that could happen with that property, but I'll get you an update on the demolition schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Oops. Okay, Resolution 8.02 is accepting a purchase offer on the former Empire School property in the amount of $5,000. This is one of those partnerships with the City of Cleveland in redeveloping district properties. The city issued an RFP, and we collaboratively selected developers for the property. We have established benchmarks for developers to meet prior to transferring the property. The developers are struggling to resolve construction inflation with our requirement that we will not transfer the property unless they can demonstrate a viable plan for redevelopment. Beacon Communities has been working on their financial plan to convert Empire into 65 units of affordable housing. Beacon now has funding commitments from CMHA, Ohio Department of Development, Cogga County, and the City of Cleveland. They also plan to seek state historical tax credits. However, the recent passage of Ohio House Bill 45 prohibits combining house finance credits with historic credits, so they had to work around that shortfall. They are now seeking an $800,000 federal affordable housing program grant, and that funding is competitive with points awarded based on a variety of criteria. An additional five points can be awarded for donated property. So per Ohio Revised Code, we cannot be worth more than $2,500, and the fair market value is $65,000. We can agree to sell the property to the city to whatever term we recommend, and so we're recommending the reduced price of $5,000 to make Beacon's score for federal affordable housing more competitive. We believe in the city and Beacon agree that reducing the price strengthens their grant application, could result in the $800,000 of funding, and ultimately serve the best interests of the community, and the district would avoid the maintenance of Empire, which is the heating, theft-proofing, ground maintenance, and abating and demolishing, estimated at about $750,000. We similarly discounted the price for the former John W. Raper School site to help the Western Reserve Land Conservatory obtain grant funding in a very similar way. And I'll pause for any questions.
Where is this?
It is, yes.
Hmm. I don't remember the school at all.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, other questions?
The name of that school I was referring to earlier is Fulton.
Oh, okay. Oh, that really is a long time ago.
Yeah. And Channel 19 ran a story about it.
Okay. I'll look into that. Okay.
So will all of the units, Empire, may be affordable housing for seniors then?
It is affordable housing. I don't know if it's all for seniors. Let me see.
I'm just looking at the letter in the attachment. It says 65 units of affordable housing for seniors.
Then yes, that's correct.
Is this like, okay, not another set of apartments that will push out our neighborhood, or the people who already live in the neighborhood are trying to...
No, this is only affordable housing. It's not mixed housing or anything else, only affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Resolution 9.01 is a resolution entering into a partnership agreement with the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium. The Greater Cleveland Career Consortium is the public-private partnership that we created as part of our PACE Planning and Career Exploration Framework. So PACE is the district framework, sixth through 12th grade student curriculum, but like we've done with Pre-Fur-Clee, the Higher Education Compact, the Transformation Alliance... All right, resolution 9.01 is a resolution entering into a partnership agreement with the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium. The Greater Cleveland Career Consortium is the public-private partnership that we created as part of our PACE Planning and Career Exploration Framework. Um, so PACE is the district framework, sixth through 12th grade student curriculum. Um, but like we've done with PrefrClee, the Higher Education Compact, the Transformation Alliance, the Say Yes, uh, organization, uh, we also set out to create a, a public-private partnership, um, of other partners, including Youth Opportunities Unlimited, Ohio Means Jobs, um, um, Junior Achievement, a number of businesses and corporations. And so, uh, the difference about, uh, the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium is that employers don't look for employees in a single school district. And so unlike all of those others that are focused on our district, this one is focused on a more regional impact. Um, they have already reached out to, I believe, 10, uh, first-string suburban school districts who are also joining the consortium. All of them are also adopting PACE instead of creating their own curriculum, which I think we can be very proud of. Um, and this is an agreement that each of the school districts is being asked to adopt, committing to technical assistance, uh, in implementing the framework, uh, participating in research and evaluation of the career work, assess, um, providing access to high-quality youth-serving organizations that can support the delivery. So for example, Junior Achievement, um, and, uh, College Now Greater Cleveland as delivery partners. Um, access to a network of trained employer partners, and that's the work that, um, is being done through the Transio tool, uh, where we train partners and create opportunities for young people, and then access to the actual Transio tool itself. So we are, um, asking the board to adopt this, uh, agreement to work with the consortium in the same way that other school districts across, um, the first-string suburban districts are being asked to join the consortium as well.
Uh, just a quick question. You mentioned there were 10, 10 other districts that were going to join the consortium. Can you just send the board an update on which ones those are?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, resolution 9.02 is a resolution modifying the sponsorship contracts with seven community schools sponsored by the Cleveland Municipal School District. Uh, this happens every year with, uh, where the state makes changes to the rules and, and sponsoring, uh, community schools or charter schools. And so every year we ask you to update the, uh, the amendments to those contracts, but we do not change the duration. So these are not asking for extensions of the contracts, but just amending them to, uh, align to current state law. Um, each of the seven schools has an individual contract modification exhibit and an individual five-year forecast exhibit. Um, there is one accountability exhibit for all seven schools. These schools do already have the reporting requirements for discipline data that the board has asked for. We actually last presented that to you in September, at the September board meeting. Um, we have made a note, um, in June, uh, when the partner schools renew that we will be adding that element in, as requested by the board as well. Um, one school also has an academic program exhibit and a facility, facility exhibit. Um, and, uh, these are needed to update out-of-date language in the current exhibits, and it is a best practice to review these annually, so we do every year at this time of the year. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on these seven schools. Okay. Uh, resolution 9.03 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of an enclosed hauler trailer from Majestic Trailer and Hitch, necessary for the transportation of tools and equipment for community project-based learning experiences for Max Hayes High School students at various locations within the district, in the amount not to exceed $11,299. And this is exactly what it sounds like. We're buying a trailer so that kids can, uh, take their equipment and go out into the community and, and do their work in their construction projects out in the community instead of only at the school.
Dr. Thomas? Is it gonna have our logo on it, or the Max Hayes logo, or something on it to identify what it is?
I'm certain it will, but I will verify. I will verify that.
So what, what would an example be of work that they are doing out in the community?
It's, it was in there, like rebuilding a porch.
So.
Oh, are, but.
Yeah, so this is allowing them.
How does all that happen?
So this allows them to, um, do things in our district and in the neighborhood. So for example, um, they're gonna be building picnic tables for the East Tech Culinary Program, for the outdoor seating. Uh, they're gonna build a gazebo for a garden on East 39th Street. Um, they're, I'm gonna actually get to work with Sherwin-Williams on lead abatement in some different sites. So it's a number, they're gonna rebuild front steps and front stoops for, uh, community members. So it gives them an opportunity to do a larger number of small projects as opposed to kind of the traditional, kind of build the house in the school, and that's your only way you learn the craft. So it gets them, uh, it helps us to move them more into the, uh, small item and maintenance space along with the larger construction field. Okay, resolution 9.04 is a resolution adopting the Student Code of Conduct for the 2023-24 school year. Uh, with this resolution, the board will adopt the Student Code of Conduct. Uh, the Student Behavior Supports Committee, which is, again, comprised of the district and CTU members, completed an update, um, and, including feedback from this board from, uh, April of 2022. Um, this did include student feedback. I am verifying whether it also got parent feedback, but I've already got the text that it included student feedback. Um, changes that are in this are highlighted in Exhibit A and include removing any examples referencing to traditionally female clothing in the student dress expectations, based on the feedback from the board, so that it is intentionally much more neutral. Um, this addresses the concerns that previously listed restricted items felt like they were focused on female clothing in an unbalanced manner. You can see that on page seven, um, of Exhibit A. Uh, four code sections where we reworked to improve the reading ease of each section. Uh, this includes the, uh, flesh concave grade level of every section of the Code of Conduct, so that's a tool that can help us look at readability. So I think, Ms. Link, that was your recommendation that we look at. Um, we looked at modifications to the Student Promotion Section, to the Student Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Section, connected to the earlier board policy, to the Corporal Punishment Section, and to the Emerg, Emergency Removal Section. Um, the CTU has also already approved this, and so once approved by the board, we'll go ahead and move this into production for next school year. And I'll pause for any questions.
Ms. Valdez?
Um, just to thank you for making sure that that change was made around the gender, um, I guess, balance or the, the focus on the female, traditionally female clothing, and just wanna note that, like you said, we have heard from, from students as well as the board about that, so I'm glad to see the change.
Thank you. And, um, I actually personally got to engage with the students from Cleveland School of the Arts, um, but the committee engaged with other students as well. All right, and resolution 9.05 is a resolution adopting the Cleveland Municipal School District Calendar for school year 2023-24. Uh, the calendar is presented tonight with the understanding that the board has time to continue our community engagement. You will see an exhibit called School Year 23-24 Calendar Community Feedback Form. Um, our team is currently going through all of that feedback to see if we would propose any changes. We left it open all the way to this, um, board work session uh, so that we could give as big of a window as possible. There were 42, uh, contributors answering, uh, four different questions that you can see in the exhibit. And again, our team is reviewing those now for any potential modifications. If we do have those modifications, we'll make them clearly marked, uh, when we bring it back to the board.
I noticed there's a, a couple of them about the spring break, and people want it more aligned with the holiday, the religious holiday, than with the calendar that affects, uh, quarters and semesters and things like that. So I assume that's why the break happens at the time of the year between the third and fourth semesters, or quarters?
It happens for two reasons. One is the, uh, break for quarters. The other is when state testing occurs, uh, which hap, happens in April with, which with the late Easters we're having right now.
Right.
Presents a conflict for us. So when the Easter cycles back into the March, it aligns much more nicely. Uh, but it is much more difficult for us to have a later spring break because of state testing.
Yeah, I think it'd be very difficult with a holiday, a religious holiday that moves as much as Easter does to align that. Okay.
Um, thank you, Chair. Mr. Gordon, I'm looking at it probably closer since we're about to adopt it, but I did notice that the last day of school is like two days after Memorial Day, and so are we concerned with attendance, just as we are at the beginning of the, the year sometimes?
Yeah, so this is another quirk of how the calendar is falling right now. We have traditionally tried to have student days end by Memorial Day. We are currently in a cycle that when we do that, our August start date is significantly earlier. And so we've, this year, and then proposed for next year, we do have a few days after, um, Memorial Day. Yes, we are concerned that attendance falls off, uh, after Memorial Day, but we're equally concerned about how early we were coming back on the last couple of calendars. Uh, we were pushing, as you'll recall, into like August 13th, August 15th, and we were getting feedback that was too early. So this is kind of the trade-off of that in this, I think, probably another two years before, uh, the winter break holidays and the Easter holidays kind of set back into kind of the sweet spot of the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, resolution 10 point, uh, resolutions, section 10 are, are regular monthly talent resolutions. The first is authorizing employment of teaching, non-teaching, and school-based administrative staff. Uh, you will see that this is 69 new hires, so we continue to aggressively recruit. Uh, this includes 37 members of the Cleveland Teachers Union, 10 members of the OPBA security team, uh, nine members of the SEIU, uh, four environmental service specialists, five lunchroom attendants, um, a driver trainee and professional driver, and 12 non-bargaining, uh, positions, including campus coordinators, um, and, and, uh, substitutes, and then some, um, infrastructure engineers and inventory managers that run kind of the back-of-the-house work of the district. Resolution 10.02 is a reclassification of employees. This is 25 reclassifications. Just as a reminder, reclassification is just a, a change of job for current existing employees. Resolution 10.03 is a resolution accepting the retirement resignation and other separation of employees. This is 54 separations, including 38 resignations, 15 retirements, and one because of no license. And you see at the bottom, we do also have this school year to date, uh, for both. Uh, you will see that, uh, we are about in the same place for certificated staff members, a little higher for school-based administrators, but significantly lower for classified employees this school year. And resolution 10.04 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of limited contracts for differential positions and the payments of additional earned compensation to employees. Uh, this is, uh, 14 stipends, six for testing coordinators, one for a special education liaison, uh, four for basketball coaches, a chess sponsor, and two cheerleader sponsors. And this concludes the resolutions for discussion for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Is there any old or new business to come before the board? Seeing none, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish our colleague Kathleen Valdez a happy birthday, who's celebrating your birthday this month. Someone informs me. The next regular board meeting will be a board business meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, at 6:30 PM at Garrett Morgan High School, 4600 Detroit Avenue. The Chair will now entertain a motion that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment and employment of public employees and officials, preparing for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, and conferring with attorneys concerning disputes involving the Board of Education that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Stockdale, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudle?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Valdez?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven votes.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. The board will now move into executive session. Following executive session, we will return to this room to briefly conduct further business.
Hello, everybody. We're so happy to be here in Cleveland and just spent the morning visiting some amazing schools. I'm Cindy Martin, Deputy Secretary of Education, representing Secretary Cardona for our Raise the Bar, Lead the World Tour, where we're looking across the country on this tour around excellent academic learning conditions and how we're increasing student access to high-quality learning, like we see here. This project-based learning here in Cleveland. I just heard students firsthand talk about hands-on, minds-on learning using competency-based approaches, using project-based learning, where the whole student is considered in the design of teaching and learning. Teachers are supported here, students are supported. Can't wait to talk to parents later today and get into some roundtables. There's nothing like career-connected learning like we saw here at this school and the social-emotional supports for students as they progress in their education. It was so great to be with you.
Thank you.
This is your hometown.
Yes.
And the kids definitely are happy to see you here. I wanna say thank you to our superintendent. The goals and the mission of this school district are on anytime, anywhere, learning and making sure that there's whole human learning that's part of the design from the very youngest learners. This is what it means to raise the bar in Cleveland. This is what it means to raise the bar in education, a model for our country to come and see what it's like in a large urban setting, what it's like to give students what they need, when they need it, in the way that they need it. That's what equity looks like. So we love to see this, and I'm happy to be able to be a part of it today.
Thank you all for being here at Digital Arts and Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School. We also visited Memorial School, and what we saw is, uh, what we're trying to activate for all kids, all learners, citywide. Uh, we saw multiple examples of our young people working on complex tasks that they were very interested and engaged in, and that they were showing what they were learning, not only academic content, but also the transferable skills that they'll take into their next project, including the student journalists that are behind these cameras, uh, who, as part of their assignment, um, are covering this press conference.
I'm in photography and film class, so I was like specifically chosen to be a paparazzi and go around and take pictures of behind-the-scenes. It was awesome being around professional cameramen and women. It was awesome to see like the big lens and how everything works. I actually learned a lot. It's like be patient, 'cause you're in a room with a lot of people. It's gonna be hard to get a good picture. Don't be shy, step out of your shell a bit, because if you're shy about it, then you're probably not gonna get any good takes. You wanna be up close and personal with some to be, like, in the moment. So like, I learned that, like, being around, like, don't be shy around a lot of people, especially the Secretary of Education. I was very shy to meet her, but she was really nice and amazing.
The reason why we're here in Cleveland is because students here are given an opportunity to see their future. I'm gonna quote the teacher that I just heard upstairs in, in the Digital Media Arts School. She said, "Our future is intact." And she told me the story of a student who, he was able to say what his plans are. If you can see it, you can be it, because of the way Cleveland is getting the job done here in education. This is what academic excellence looks like, and students feel a sense of belonging here in these schools because of the way they've been designed, from the youngest learners all the way to career-connected. Kids are leaving here with degrees under their belt. They have certificates ready to enter the workforce. The answers for the future of Cleveland are right here in our schools when we give them the supports they need. In this district, teachers know their students, well, your superintendent knows students too, knows your students by name, by strength, and by need, and they're designing systems that help students learn, but they're ready for the workforce as well, so you don't have to look outside of the area. Who you need for the jobs of the future are right here inside a school system that's built for them.
CMSD is a vastly different place than we were in 2011. Together, the momentum we are seeing from kindergarten to third-grade literacy improvements, the momentum we are seeing on test scores from third grade through high school, and the momentum we are seeing on continuously increasing graduation rates earned us an overall grade of D on this year's report card, up from the F we earned last year. I started the speech today by talking about Newton's Laws, but up to now, I haven't mentioned Newton's Third Law. For every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. That law implies that our momentum can be stopped if an equal and opposite reaction is applied.
Health experts believed it was just a matter of time, and now the coronavirus is in Ohio. Three cases in Cogga County.
So we will, are announcing today, uh, that children of the state will have an extended spring break.
One week turned into two, two turned into three, and then next thing you know, we're supposed to be having summer break. supposed to be having summer break.
I teach math. Math is an exact science. It's very hard to teach mathematics online or through a computer to a kid who doesn't know what one-to-one correspondence is, doesn't know what a number is.
We learned that when it was required of us, we could innovate very, very quickly. I hope that we don't lose that as the world seeks a sense of balance and normalcy again.
The Executive Grill at East Tech High School is officially open, so let's check out what's on the menu today.
Hello, welcome to the Executive Grill.
We've been overwhelmed with excitement, and we're ready to go.
Diners came hungry to the grand opening of the Executive Grill Restaurant.
This is wonderful for the younger adults who's growing up. They learn to cook, they learn to put something else in order, they're learning to check out people and take orders and, you know, it's wonderful.
But they were also curious to see the student-run restaurant in action in its new location.
Well, when they told me they were taking over the whole swimming area, this is amazing.
I walked in, I started crying. And it is magnificent. It is beautiful. I am truly happy for them.
Camilla Boyd, a 2016 graduate of Jane Addams Business Career Center, also was a student at the Cleveland Culinary Arts. She says she is blown away by the new digs and the food.
The food amazing. I am full.
Through the windows, the diners can see what is going on in the kitchen. Students are hard at work, preparing food for the lunch rush while honing their culinary skills.
It's so nice, it's so pretty here. It's so much more organized here, and it's so much bigger, and I feel like the communication is getting easier here because like we have new and better technology.
Michaela, an East Tech High School senior, is in the back of the kitchen making pizzas. She is unfazed by this being the grand opening.
Just another normal day in the kitchen, except with more orders than normal.
While Cleveland Culinary Arts students showcase their talents, the talents of other career technical programs at East Technical High School are on display. The plans are from the Horticulture Program.
Our urban agriculture teacher with her hydroponic gardens grows the lettuce, tomatoes, herbs.
Students made these vases with a 3D printer in the arts and robotics classes. And with ingredients from the Executive Grill, students taking the Small Animal Science class make and sell these healthy dog biscuits.
We don't want to just showcase what one set of students are doing, but across the board, we're showcasing the whole school, what all the kids are doing, and how it all can come together in one nice, neat little package, which is the Executive Grill.
They were looking for a Cleveland school that wanted to have a digital music studio in their building. I'm lucky enough, I have great administrators on all three of the schools that I serve. So they all said, "Yeah, you know, we can do that. We can make that happen." And so, I didn't know the scope of it, though. I thought I'd get an iPad, you know, and maybe a couple of microphones, and yay, you know? But no, it's a little overwhelming, honestly. It's really a little bit overwhelming.
Well, we got an email from Save the Music. Matt Ackerman, who is the person who takes care of all of that, he sent an email to Sam Ash Music saying, "Hey, these guys got a grant, and we want you to fill this purchase order." We filled the purchase order, and we brought all this cool gear to John Marshall, and we're happy to do it. We're happy to be part of this program. Most of the orders that we've done have been for schools in the Detroit area, but this is the first time we had a school in the Cleveland area, so we were really happy about that. So we wanted to make sure we made something special, brought all the gear here, and made a big deal of it.
Well, it actually means a lot for me because, I mean, music has been like my passion since I was like a little kid, and I feel motivated to come to school and have all this stuff because I know that I will be back here and playing, and it's just what I love to do. And with all this stuff, I don't know, I just feel happy.
What all of this does, and it looks like a lot of, you know, stuff, heady technological stuff, but what's great about the new era of electronic music is if you've got a sound in your head, you can manipulate a piece of plastic and metal and make that sound come out. The person that this grant is named after, Jay Dilla, he wasn't a drummer, he wasn't a saxophone player, he was somebody that took the Akai pad and did just that. It allows the students to, you know, get into the performing arts, music, and audio production. There's so many great positions out there. Also showing the kids, hey, this is a sought-after job. There are people that have employment and, you know, setting up stuff like this, knowing, you know, what sound levels are and everything, and it's exposing them to something else that maybe they didn't know this was their favorite thing in the entire world until they get in and they get to use an iPad and use SoundCloud or use Band in a Box, and all of a sudden they go, wow, I really dig this. I see so much talent in these kids, and for it to be, to provide a venue for them where it's safe to be creative, because the number one detractor from creativity, the one thing that keeps people from being creative is fear. They're afraid of failure among their peers, or from a teacher, or from someone that they respect, someone dismissing what their creativity is. And it's just so many people that are naturally incredibly creative, they don't get that nurtured. And to have that in an environment like this where it's safe to take and give criticism just to get better, that just makes me feel, and then watching them perform.
I'm so grateful, grateful for these people that gave us all this equipment. Yes, and thank you so much for all this.
Ideally, we're making well-rounded citizens. You're at a live show, and it's like, wow, I just watched him change guitars, break a string, and I didn't even know it if I hadn't been paying attention. That's a really good, whoever's doing in front of house is really on it. So it's, you know, be able to appreciate that level of artistry, you know, even if they don't decide to be a, you know, a music tech or a music geek like me. They get to speak intelligently, and any chance for education is good, and having fun. I like the fun part.
CMSD is a vastly different place than we were in 2011. Together, the momentum we are seeing from kindergarten to third-grade literacy improvements, the momentum we are seeing on test scores from third grade through high school, and the momentum we are seeing on continuously increasing graduation rates earned us an overall grade of D on this year's report card, up from the F we earned last year. I started the speech today by talking about Newton's Laws, but up to now, I haven't mentioned Newton's Third Law. For every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. That law implies that our momentum can be stopped if an equal and opposite reaction is applied.
Health experts believed it was just a matter of time, and now the coronavirus is in Ohio. Three cases in Cuyahoga County.
So we are announcing today that children of the state will have an extended spring break.
One week turned into two, two turned into three, and then next thing you know, we're supposed to be having summer break.
I teach math. Math is an exact science. It's very hard to teach mathematics online or through a computer to a kid who doesn't know what one-to-one correspondence is, doesn't know what a number is.
We learned that when it was required of us, we could innovate very, very quickly. I hope that we don't lose that as the world seeks a sense of balance and normalcy again.
Students, parents, and teachers spent Thursday afternoon speaking with U.S. Department of Education Secretary Cindy Martin. During these roundtable talks, high school students who participate in Civics 2.0, the district's civics program, talked about how they are using their voice to bring awareness to gun violence prevention and taking action.
We can do a lot. As kids in this club, we're very powerful.
Young adults should influence other young adults on the right path, at least in my opinion.
Parent ambassadors talked about the importance of building relationships between caregivers and educators.
Because, you know, we all truly care about, you know, my child and everybody else's child. And I feel like parents are, it's a little bit easier to come, maybe to talk to us and feel like they're not being judged.
Like I never knew the power parents have in this district. I never knew how much the district actually wanted us.
Do you hear that the power parents have?
Yeah, and now it's like I see it, I see what we can do.
And educators shared what type of support they are receiving from the district to give better instruction to students.
But I'm lucky in that I have the freedom to do math and science the way I need to, and it was through the community of practice sessions that I started.
I do love the inquiry model. It really takes like a load off of me. Like, it's easy for my kids to research, it's easy for me to work with the group that may need me more than the group that doesn't.
Deputy Secretary Martin says these conversations were honest and authentic. Martin is visiting just eight school districts across the country as part of the Department of Education's Raise the Bar, Lead the World Initiative. CMSD is her fourth stop.
We at the Department of Education are talking about how to raise the bar in education around academic excellence and learning conditions and global competitiveness. Cleveland is setting the bar high.
In addition to the talks, Martin stopped by Memorial Pre-K through 8th School and participated in a demonstration of learning. This student project was about what items students would take with them if they had to leave their house during an emergency.
I chose to bring this money, and I'm bringing money because I can buy more clothes, buy more food.
She also toured Digital Arts High School and Davis Aerospace and Maritime High School.
And as we go and look at examples of how districts are raising the bar, what I saw specifically today is raising the bar in academic excellence. How did that happen in Cleveland? How are students getting the supports that they need to be caught up, to accelerate their learning, and to have a broad and challenging, robust educational experience? I saw examples of that across this district that we're going to lift up and elevate for people to learn from.
Martin says the information she gathered during this tour will be used as a resource for districts across the country.
Across the country, districts are looking for examples of how to raise the bar, and our Raise the Bar Initiative will be publishing resources on the Department of Education's website around examples of what it looks like, and we'll have a shining star as an example when we spotlight Cleveland.
Those who participated in these talks felt encouraged by her visit and glad they could share their experiences.
It's now back in public session. The Board will, the Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of a non-teaching employee, Ashanti McKennie.
Second.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. This is a recommendation for termination for failing the probationary period.
Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudnall?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Valdez?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven votes.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the suspension of a non-teaching employee. Can you help me? Redemus Burgos.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. This is a recommendation for a five-day suspension for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules.
Mr. Stockdale, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudnall?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Valdez?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven votes.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the termination of a teaching employee, Joseph Marshall.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. This is a recommendation for termination for violation of district policies, procedures, and rules warranting termination.
Mr. Stockdale?
Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudnall?
Yes.
Mrs. Link?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Valdez?
Yes.
Motion passes with seven votes.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, the Chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn this Board Work Session.
So move.
Second.
Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Good night and Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.